I'd know this by now, call to order.
Yep.
At five thirty PM. Alright. Let's uh get into it. Alright, uh first of all, per RSA one eighty-nine seventy-four, if anybody has any public input, um the public input should now begin. Uh do we have any announcements? Got anything? Uh the public input period is open right now, so if you need anything, just raise your hand. Alright, uh Molly.
Hi.
Fiscal year twenty-three recap.
So we don't have the FY twenty-four financials yet because we typically start that in October every year because we have to start building the encumbrances and working with Brandon and his team throughout the month of September. So next month you will see the first financial for fiscal year twenty-four, which is the year we're currently in. So fiscal year twenty-three, we have wrapped that up, um we finished the DOE twenty-five, which you signed. Um at the end of the year, we did have some food service payments come in, which brought the food service loss down. We had some unanticipated Medicaid and E-rate come in on the revenue side. So you finish with approximately ninety-four thousand dollars in the unassigned fund balance, which is good. And that's how we finished last year. Did anyone have any questions?
Uh what happens to that money?
Yeah, so that is, so the unassigned fund balance is, it offsets your tax rate. So we don't write a check to the town of East Kingston. So what happens is in the spring you vote on your budget, in the fall we project revenues. And so the school has sources of revenue from um interest on investment, meaning interest on the the money you have in the bank. Food service revenue, if you were to rent out the gym, any income you have from that, um we get special education aid. And we project that, and any monies not covering the budget, which you rented revenues like this much and your budget is a lot more. So the delta has to be raised in taxes. So what the unanticipated fund, or the unreserved fund balance, I should say, that reduces the amount you have to raise in taxes.
Okay.
So it's an a credit to your tax rate essentially.
Excellent.
Okay. So the other thing on the agenda was the unanticipated adequacy. So the state of New Hampshire changed the funding formula for adequacy. Questions have come up if we'll see this time and time again. They did break it into two columns, less stable and more stable. It's not a guarantee, but all of SAU sixteens fall in the more stable category. So that leads me to believe this will happen going forward at the increased rate. So the school district has a choice. You can either let it fall to the tax rate, so it'd be a further credit to your tax rate. Or you could hold a special meeting, it would involve a public hearing, and then posting for a special meeting, which is essentially kind of like your deliberative session that we typically hold in an SB two town. But you wouldn't have ballots, it would be whoever shows up in the room at that point in time would take a vote if you wanted to vote to appropriate this money. Now, East Kingston has the ability to potentially appropriate twenty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Now, the recommendation, and Dr. Bennet can correct me if I'm wrong, across SAU has been to return it in the tax rate because there have not been any unanticipated needs that have risen since the budget was developed. Or if there have, then there have been funding sources to identify how to pay for it. Whether it be savings in the budget with rehires or trust funds that you have available. And so what would happen is if this was to be returned, this would be a further credit to the the tax rate set in November.
Okay. Um. One thing that, the immediate thing that I thought of is our maintenance line is going to be big this year. And we're potentially gonna have to dip into the maintenance fund, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um. I would like to have a discussion on if you two would think that trying to get a warrant article to move that twenty-nine thousand dollars into the maintenance fund would be something that might be appealing. The roof being the big one.
Right, that was my question. What are the, what are the line items that you're thinking of? So the roof being the main focus.
I mean, e- e- even if, even if we don't um use that much on maintenance this year, the roof's coming. And I would, I would think that putting that money towards the maintenance fund, even just in anticipation of that. Also, we've had a ton of maintenance, uh you guys saw the issues with the lead pipes, or the lead in the water. Hoping it's just a faucet, is that right?
That's our hope, yeah.
But that could be additional if it's further down the line.
Molly, can I ask you a question?
Mm.
Once, if we decide to put this, you go the warrant hearing, do we get to keep that money for as many years as we need? Or do we have to use it within the year?
So it would be placed in the maintenance. So having the warrant article, it would be a raise and appropriate warrant article, not a fund balance warrant, a warrant article like we're typically used to. And you can think of it, and I used this analogy with the DOE the other day. You can think of it as adding a warrant article to the March twenty-twenty-three ballot that happened a while ago, late in the gig. So it would be a raise and appropriate to the trust fund, and then it would remain in the trust fund until you need it done. But you would have to have the public hearing, go through the whole posting for the public hearing, have the deliberative set, not the deliberative, the, they call it the annual, the special meeting, to have the vote.
And only the people who show up actually, that's the vote we take?
Yes, so it essentially turns it into what they call like the old town styles, so the way Brentwood and Stratum operate. They go into a room and duke it out until they come out with a number for a school budget, they don't go to a ballot vote. And this essentially would be the same as how they typically do theirs. And you'd have to follow, you'd have to follow the posting requirements and all of that.
No, normally if we, if I understand this correctly, um if we wanted to use the money, we'd have to be extremely specific on everything that we use it for. This case would be very specific, it goes to this fund.
Mm-hmm.
So it, it, it gives the flexibility to be maintenance. And there's also decent oversight, we have to approve monies going out of that fund, right?
You are the agents to expend.
Yeah, so we're using to expand, and on top of that, it's got to go through the fund manager too, which is that Ted Lloyd as well.
Uh, but there's, I think there's a team of people.
Yeah, so.
So he's typically who we deal with.
Yeah.
And we would, we would expend the money, and then we would ask the trust for reimbursement.
Yeah.
So we submit all of our receipts to show that what we spent it on is what is the original intent. And then they give the money to us and we relieve the expense, just kind of how we did with that special education trust last year, if you remember.
Yeah. So there's a, there's a lot of oversight that goes in into this behind it. And I just, looking down the road, we're going to have maintenance expenses.
Yeah. My, my only question with that i- is what benefits the taxpayer more? Us not asking them for more money and we, because we have this little bank account, right? Or giving it back to them and then saying, oh, by the way, now we need, now we need to raise taxes because we have to do the roof.
Well, it's a timing thing.
Okay.
Ultimately, everything we don't spend would go back to the taxpayers, um it's just a timing of when. So if you're looking, I wonder if we're thinking about the roof?
It's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be part of our, I think, October discussion, once we have the beginnings of our five-year plan together. Renee and I met with um Dr. Andruski last week to start putting the the template together on one of our biggest needs. The roof is definitely our biggest need, so we'll be discussing that probably at that next meeting on the best ways to get there. And there's multiple, you know, options that we talked with Dr. Andruski about that we could potentially go for. In addition to, like Andy said, we've had, we've had, which is part of my board report tonight, but so I'm not gonna get into it too much. But we've had a huge amount of expenses that were unanticipated this summer. Um and we just had a couple more, just this, just this week. So we're already, we're, we're already close to twenty thousand dollars over twenty-six thousand dollar maintenance budget, and we're already September eleventh.
And you also have the sergeant trust too, that's up there.
Which we've never touched since I've been here.
Uh, we've already.
How much is in our maintenance fund right now?
Um, does anyone have the last word pass?
Yes, we looked it up.
We did just look that up. And we, I had actually had um our accountant pull the sergeant trust as well, so let me just find that.
My first thoughts would be to wait till next month so we can get a better view of exactly what we're looking at, because we wouldn't have to make a decision today, right? We'd do it next month.
Well, the thing is, is they can't set your tax rate until we decide. And they set the tax, and so um if you waited and you still have to have all the posting timelines, you're gonna hold up the East Kingston tax rate.
Okay.
In the trust fund, the maintenance trust fund, as of June twenty-three, it was one hundred and twenty-two thousand. And the estimate to replace the roof last time the school board thought that was a hundred and six thousand.
It's gonna be lower.
It's gonna be low, okay, it will be low.
Uh we had two that were lower that just came in, I asked Mr. Mizzi to get me the actual quotes in writing for the October meeting. But in the conversation he had with the two, um the two contractors, it was lower than what we originally received, which is good.
So I'll go back to my original question, what, what benefits the taxpayer more? Us being able to say, let's do this special hearing so that we can keep the twenty-nine thousand something dollars and let them set the tax rate? My, my fear is, or guess I'll, I'll say personally, like, I give back the money and then all of a sudden we go to the ballot in March, and now you need more money from the taxpayer when we had the thirty grand sitting and the tax rate had to shift. And, and that's, that's what I don't want to do to, to our families and folks. Like, if we can set the rate, we know what it is, and we can use the thirty grand, the twenty-nine grand for these offset costs without interrupting, I think that's a more streamlined approach. But again, I'm not a math person, so I'm not even gonna.
So you could either appropriate it to the maintenance fund and not give it back in the tax rate. Or if you did give it back in the tax rate, it would slightly lower the tax rate. Um but any roof project, I'm guessing you're gonna, or major project, would go to bond if needed, or would you, you know?
That's one of a couple options that we will present to the board.
If you were to bond it, then it's gonna spread it across many years. So you'd see the impact across many years versus one year. And I mean, you also have the sergeant trust out there, which um I'm trying to pull up this summary, but I think they're saying it has two hundred and forty thousand in it.
Uh, that wasn't on the, the June.
Yeah, and it's not, it's not a typical trust fund, that's why um just shouldn't pull up here.
Molly, what are the per- parameters around using the sergeant trust fund, sergeant trust fund?
So.
Is there certain things the board can allocate the funds for?
So I have a really, really old PDF.
Okay.
That described it from, well, it's from two thousand eight, but it's um, it's pretty big.
Okay.
Um.
Was that the one that was to expand to a two-level school?
No, that's the one, no, that one is what we dissolved.
Okay.
That's what, and then.
We dissolved it completely.
Yep, so we dissolved it and it went to, I think it was partially maintenance, partially special ed, and it created a retirement trust.
Yep, and then someone backed it down.
Yes.
Yep.
So the sergeant trust, like, what is the premise of that one?
So, let's see, it says. I mean, it's pretty, pretty broad, um. It doesn't really say. I mean, it's, it's the last written testament of Richard Sargent, is what I have.
We're allowed to use the funds?
Yeah.
Someone can write a check?
So it says it's for school purposes.
School purposes?
Okay.
What has been used out of that so far?
I don't know if it's ever been touched.
Right.
Have to pull.
We haven't touched it since I've been around, I can tell you that.
We haven't touched it since I've been around.
I'd, I'd hesitate to. I'd hesitate to dig into that for any random reason.
Yeah.
We, we have stuff, we have a maintenance fund for maintenance stuff. So, I, so down the line, one option for the roof is a bond.
Mm-hmm.
Or dig into the maintenance trust, is that kind of our two options?
Yes, or appropriate a larger um set of funds in the project line um for the next few years. And then you would have enough money to do the, the roof, so there's like three options. Plan a three-year plan to save up the money through the budget process and putting it on a project line and, and designating um on, on, on.
We would put a warrant on for them uh to come from fund balance.
Yes.
So instead of you returning money next year, hopefully as long as we are able to save money to the budget, then we would increase that. Or you could also, instead of putting from fund balance, you could also put a raise and appropriate.
To increase the budget.
Correct.
And there's also, looking at the audit that the board had commissioned last year, the roof is one of a, of a few items on the list of, of, of things to get done, so, and some things are already breaking that we've spent on. So just thinking of the board's goals.
What about the boiler? Like, I feel like the maintenance fund is probably for like things that we don't expect that immediately we have to fix, so.
We have two boilers, we have one that, that was just replaced five years ago.
Okay.
Um, the one in the back of the building um is actually one of the things that was unexpected.
Okay.
That just came up last week. Um, it's not providing any hot water to the back of this building, which is not, it's, it's fine now, but once the heat turns on, it's not gonna supply any heat. So um it's another expense, like, again, that's not even on here because it just happened. Um and that's gonna be one that we're gonna add to our five-year plan, needs to be looked at, that we didn't anticipate, but it's twenty-something years old.
Okay, and no estimates yet for that?
No. But I think, yeah, that something like the maintenance trust would be done for something like that, that needs to heat our building or whatever that breaks a little bit, yeah.
And the roof estimates, like, are they saying that needs to be done immediately? Or, I know we've sort of talked about this before, but I just didn't know what the recommendation, was it within two years or?
The recommendation is to get it done as soon as possible.
As soon as possible.
Yep.
Okay.
Just because of, of the water that's coming into some of our classrooms.
Okay.
So we, we could probably get by through the winter um with the patches that are on there now, but definitely by next year, yeah.
So the five-year or the capital improvement plan has got a total of a hundred and eighty-five thousand worth of items.
Everything highlighted there is things that we've done, either because we were at planning it or we had to do it because things broke.
Okay.
This summer, yeah.
So.
And a bunch of things that we just added last week, we don't even have quotes yet.
Yeah, so a hundred and fifty thousand, probably somewhere around in there.
One hundred and twenty-two thousand in the.
But we can make a motion at the end of the year to use the unassigned, unassigned fund balance to fix the roof, right? With anything that we are able to come up with.
You'd have to make the payment to the person this year. So if you're thinking long-term, I, I would suggest putting a ba- a warrant on the ballot to either do from, from balance or a raise and appropriate. That way the town has the ability to vote to put money towards it.
Because the chances of us having that balance, getting the work completed and paying by June thirtieth is slim to none, right? Is, like, is that why you're saying that?
Well, I, 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 are, are you gonna feel comfortable having a contractor in place and know who you're gonna pay before June thirtieth?
No, that's what I'm saying, it's, it's, it's too, too short of a timeline.
Yeah, and I'm not saying that work has to be done, but you would have to make a prepayment to a vendor, and you'd have to have selected a vendor before June thirtieth.
Yep.
And so, or you could put a warrant on the ballot to say either from, from balance if we're anticipating a lot of savings, or put a raise and appropriate, which is a raise and appropriate, just leave the budget.
But there's too many things that we have to fix that we're not gonna be able to have extra floating around.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's.
Right, so like that first option you just said, like, we don't have, if it was a year that we were gonna have maybe no fixes, but that's not the case at all.
It's not the case, no.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
And I know, Michelle, I think I talked to you, like, some of the new hires, we were looking at replacement costs and saw some savings there that could help with your fund balance.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
So we had um two teachers leave and we had replaced them.
At a lower scale.
At a much lower scale.
Okay, so, so we're gonna have, we're gonna have a balance, a positive balance coming out.
Correct, about fifty-five thousand because.
If everything stays the same.
Yes, and this doesn't look at health insurance, so I don't know if outgoing people have single versus the immediate people having a family. But salary-wise, you'd be looking about fifty to fifty-five thousand.
Honestly, I'd rather have a lower budget. Cause, cause that's projected, right?
This is, this is what we project as long as these people stay.
Okay, um, that, I'd, I'd rather, that, that sounds like consistency going forward. Um, and we've got some big budget things that I think we have the ability to not give a bump to the taxpayers one way or the other. Without having to go to a bond and, and all that other stuff, I think, I think we could probably get pretty close.
So wait, what's your recommendation, sorry?
My recommendation is take the twenty-nine thousand, put it on a warrant article to put to the maintenance trust. Rather than return to the taxpayers.
My, my only, I'm not disagreeing with that, because I don't, what I don't wanna do is then have to go to ballot to ask for more money because we didn't budget correctly, right? So I would prefer to give it back to the, to the town, so, so that people can have it. But I also don't wanna turn around and march and say, oh, and by the way, we made a mistake, we need more money again. So I don't wanna ask for any more money.
Right.
So are.
So you're saying that if we put this on the ballot in March, we'd be able to use it as soon as the vote was passed, to be able to get the roof fixed, or that portion?
On the ballot and a special meeting.
So there's two, we'd have to have a special meeting now.
Oh, special meeting, okay. Okay.
We'd have to, I'd, I'd have to work with DRE tomorrow to draft it. We'd have to post for a public hearing, follow the timeline, because it has to be certain days in advance. Then we'd have to organize with the town to have a special meeting, a town-wide meeting, I'm guessing in the gym maybe?
Yeah.
Um, it would, we'd have to have, I think, I think we'd have to have the supervisors at the checklist. We'd have to um pretty much put on what we do for a deliberative session.
Do we have to have lawyer, hire lawyers and everything to show up for that too?
Potentially.
Or a moderator?
So, does that end up costing more than twenty-nine thousand?
Exactly. Well, we're gonna have to, we're also gonna have to have a lawyer look at the warrant article. Cause to be honest, I asked Department of Revenue and the Department of Ed for a draft warrant article. They have to go to a maintenance trust and they have not had this. So I actually saw our Department of Revenue contact on Friday, and I told her, I said, there's one town that's thinking about maybe using this to have some language I can use. And she said to contact her after today and she would help me draft it if need be. And typically, we do have Gordon Graham, our attorney, look at, over all warrant articles, so we would ask legal to review. We would have to publicly post in the two places, um and then have this meeting. We'd also have to communicate with the town that it could possibly delay the tax rate setting.
And, and we can use the salary, um, the fifty-five thousand dollars on top of the hundred and twenty-two?
On top of the hundred and twenty-two.
So, so we have a hundred and twenty-two in our maintenance fund right now.
Mm-hmm.
And you're saying that right now, without knowing the consistency is that we save fifty-five thousand dollars in salaries.
Yep.
Based upon the shift, so that brings us up to a hundred and seventy-seven? Is that enough for us? Like, I, I guess the process by what you're saying, might, I don't want it to cost us more.
Yeah, that's a good point, yeah.
Right? So if we can use, if we can shift those funds and we're at a hundred and seventy-seven, does that allow us to do what we need to do immediately?
It just want, I, I know she said there's a fifty-five thousand dollars salary difference, but that is if everything seems equal, that is not a firm number.
Okay.
Give or take health insurance or other needs, so that's not a guaranteed fifty-five. You will get update, updated financials as it goes on, so I just want, I just wanna be sure that it's not.
And you haven't looked at the health insurance and people changing plans?
E- either way, would we have the opportunity to direct that?
That extra.
That extra to maintenance?
Well, you have, so if you wanna, if, if you know you're gonna spend it by year end, you, you have the ability to spend to your bottom line. You can overexpend some lines, underexpend others, just as long as it's done by June thirtieth.
Okay.
If we don't feel like that's the option, you also could put it on the ballot to come from fund balance or raise and appropriate to direct it to the maintenance trust, to carry past June thirtieth.
That seems like it may be less painful.
That's much more reasonable.
Okay, let's do that.
That's much more reasonable.
Okay, sorry for.
No, no, that's, that's it, no. I, I think the goal is here is not to raise taxes again, they just, they just had it. And so to give the money back, but then to go back in, in March and ask for money again, that, that doesn't feel right to me. This other thing doesn't feel super awesome to me either, but.
Yeah.
But if we can use funds in other places to make sure that the roof is fixed and we can get over that hundred and twenty-two in some way, shape, or form, we just have to do it before June thirtieth?
Depends which way you wanna take.
Okay.
If you wanna extend the money out of this year's budget, then we would have to pay the contractor before June thirtieth. If we are not feeling like we have the contractor in place by June thirtieth, then we would put it on a warrant article, either from, from balance or raise and appropriate to put in the trust fund to wait till we.
To the following year.
Okay.
For the following match.
Go for the following school year.
Oh, okay.
Like, for example, our neighbors in Kensington, where I live, we had a rooftop unit. They had, they were gonna do it in the summer, they knew the vendor, they had the vendor all teed up, so we made the payment in June to that vendor. But if you don't know who the vendor is, you don't wanna pay someone that you're not sure.
Well, I, 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 I think, again, we'll talk about it over the next couple of months, but if, if the board decides that, that a roof is number one priority for the summer, then I would make sure that we would have, you know, the vendor line up well before then.
And I can do some more research on the sergeant trusts as to what it would take to tap into that, um, if needed.
It would just be good to know.
Yeah, I would say yes to that.
Cause it is an expendable trust, which is different than our trust.
Okay. It, it'd be nice to know just what the requirements are in general. I'd be hesitant to dig into something that nobody's touched in a long time.
Yeah, I don't think it's ever been touched.
Yeah.
Right, so why not find out, so we have an updated version of it, just in case?
Yeah.
Alright.
So can we just, sorry, I need clarity, uh, what did we decide?
Vote to return to the taxpayers?
So, so the board's deciding to do no action?
No.
And allow the adequacy funds to just return to the taxpayers?
Is, is that, would, do you, we take no action, that's what happens?
I, I, no action yet.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright.
Sorry for the runaround, but it was a good discussion.
Communication survey, it was under.
Communication survey, it was under.
I don't know what that is.
Okay.
Does that, or?
Uh, does it have to do with the, um,
The SAU sixteen communication and.
I think that, yes. I think that has to do with, um, the co-op will be doing a communication survey for all SAU sixteen, so parents should be informed of it, but it, you do, we do not have to assign any funds to it. It has to do with a co-op and their strategic planning.
Yes, that's strategic planning, yes.
Yeah, that's what it's for, so I just, I just, I do, I remembered.
Yeah, and I think we're discussing that at the, um, SAU sixteen Joint Board Communications and Community Engagement Committee.
Yes.
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 Coming up, that type of survey that will, we're gonna get sample questions and stuff, so.
Yeah, I think the purpose of it was just to inform the board that it would be coming to parents.
Alright. Okay, see if we can get through the rest. Uh, approval minutes.
So, do you have any edits? Not. I have, uh, one edit for the June fourteenth, um, board meeting minutes. Member of the public mic needs to be taken out and replaced with Bob Negrello, EK Slackman. And then on page three, a comment that I made had said, in order to do so, needs to be taken out and to end the additional compensation needs to be added.
What page?
Um, three. And that's all I have for that. And then for the non-public question, I didn't have any edits.
So, vote to approve the June fourteenth public meeting minutes as amended, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Our second?
Second, yes, sir.
And did you say non-public, too?
Um, and then vote to approve June fourteenth, August twenty-third, June fourteenth, non-public, August twenty-third, public, and August twenty-third, non-public. Second?
Um, I have one, one small edit, Andy. There's a typo for the eight-twenty-three board meeting under board members present. A Y needs to be, um, added to Andy.
It's and harum.
Definitely stuck.
Alright, I'll do it one by one.
So I'll second your motion.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pencils, bowls, report.
Alright, thank you. Uh, so we had, we've had a great opening to our school year, um, great opening week of school. Just, um, wanna welcome our new staff members to our building. Heather Harrison, Special Education, Kim Cattle, Physical Education, Caroline Jablonski, first and second grade teacher, and Erin LaRose, a new paraprofessional. Uh, we've had twenty, twenty-one new students, uh, either coming into kindergarten or, um, into a different grade level uh, that have joined our, our King Fisher team here. Uh, we wanna thank the PTO again for sponsoring the Kona Ice Truck for the, uh, for the rainy meet your teacher event, uh, but they were out there and it was, it was very well attended, as all of the previous meet your teacher events have been. And, uh, first day of school, uh, was the most perfect morning that we could have had. It was like seventy-five degrees, sunny, uh, we started outside with our families, uh, participating in our first, uh, school convention, um, of the year. Our enrollment numbers have actually changed since the first day, uh, first week of school. Um, so what, what's, what is on my personal support is actually, um, changed since eight-twenty-eight. Uh, we have, uh, twenty kindergartners, twenty-three first graders, twenty-three second grade, um, third, uh, I'm sorry, twelve third graders, twenty-one fourth grade, nineteen fifth grade, for a total of one eighteen. Our areas of focus for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. I invited Jill Lizer, our new curriculum director, to attend today's meeting. She's been, um, I've talked about her multiple meetings, uh, since last June and, um, again, she has been such a breath of fresh air for our school and our team here, uh, with her expertise in, in, in curriculum assessment and instruction and her, um, her willingness to, um, join our team every Friday morning has, has been already paying off just with our first curriculum assessment team meeting we had last, last Friday. Uh, so our goals this year, our, as a focus, are going to be continuing to build our curriculum maps that we started last spring, uh, and enhance our professional learning communities, our PLCs. Uh, that'll be every Friday, um, vertically K to two and three to five, which is the change this year. And Jill will be part of those PLC meetings, uh, that we have every month. Um, the two main questions that we, that we really want to be answered during those meetings are what do we want students to know and how will we know that they know it? We also don't wanna forget those students that don't know it, um, and, and those students that already know it. Where you, are we gonna push those students even further? And, uh, our other, our other big, big change this year is, uh, continuing the multi-tier system of support that we started last year with our tier one. Uh, we're now making changes with our tier two and tier three with how we're providing interventions for students academically, emotionally, behaviorally, so it is a shift. Paige Tool, our school counselor, i- is, um, leading that shift. She worked with Renee over the summer, or Dr. Bennett over the summer, um, and we began the rollout, the first staff meeting. Uh, she will be here in October to present to this board on what those shifts are gonna look like here. So we're really excited about that. As you know, so much work has gone into MTSS over the last two, now going into our third year. Uh, and, and we're, we're hoping as you see, see some, some great successes with that. Again, Jill is here, and anything, um, that I didn't touch on, Jill, please take it away.
So, I'm Jill Lizer, I'm the new director of Curriculum Assessment Assessment for K-12 for SAU sixteen. I, just a little bit about me, if, if you, um, didn't read, but I previously was a principal at FA Elementary School. And before that, I was a assistant principal and special education coordinator, as well as a curriculum coordinator over at Swayze in Randwood. So, I'm familiar with SAU sixteen and it really is like a dream job to come back and work for this district and also do the thing that I feel like makes most sense to me, which is curriculum. So, um, when I was hired, I was told that, you know, East Kingston doesn't have a curriculum coordinator, so spending more time in this building and then other buildings that don't have a coordinator would be my priority. And I jumped on it because, um, I don't wanna, um, I wanna be in buildings as much as possible. So, I was like, yes, a hundred percent, I will go, I'll be there. Um, so Brandon and I met over the summer just to get to know each other a little bit, uh, talk about goals for the school, what's been going well, kind of his vision for the year moving forward. And like instantly in my conversations, I was so impressed with just like the, um, the forward thinking and format of trying to get time for his teachers to meet together vertically. And vertically, I mean, like K-two, three, five, because our teachers are singletons here, um, that can be really tricky. And so, because you were able to like come up with that strategy of, uh, once a week, they have time together, just like forty-five minutes, it's huge. I work, I support a lot of schools, um, and many schools don't have that structure yet. And so, like step one, phew, you did it. You have to get really creative with your schedule. So now, we have that time, so we have to use that time really, really effectively. There's nothing worse than having a meeting and not knowing, not having any, any outcomes from that meeting. And every single one of our meetings with teachers really will be student-focused of what do we want students to know and how do we know they know it? And I know that sounds really like simple, like, oh my gosh, isn't that what we always do? Yes, teachers are so good at doing that. What our goal is, is to make those understandings common across teachers in a vertical way. Because our students attend a school K to five and then they go to middle school and high school. Um, and as educators, we wanna make that journey like as least bumpy as possible. So all of our teachers have, uh, wonderful expertise, but as administrators, we need to create a structure where, um, they can talk together, share together, plan together, so we have the best outcomes for our kids. So a little bit of what that looks like. Um, for PLC question one, which is what do we want students to know? We're gonna talk about the competencies and the I-CAN statements that go with those competencies and put them into our curriculum maps and talk about what that means when a student demonstrates that. And having those conversations K-two and three, five will then allow, one, a smooth transition for our students, but also that teacher in that classroom, if a student's ready to move forward in their learning or if, um, they're showing they need some reteaching, that teacher has had those conversations with he, um, his or her, um, teaching partners, that they know which direction to go in and what steps to take. So it's just a part of that collaborative PLC time that enhances, um, our instruction. And it's like the best professional learning you can give an educator is to give them time to talk about this stuff. So, thank you for letting me be a part of it. I wanna also touch on the, um, assessment piece and then how that kind of goes into our MTSS model that you'll hear about from Paige next week. When we talk about what students are needing, some, and I'm really all about right now, like academic competencies, and so I know there's also the behavior, but I'm gonna just speak to the academic piece. When we have a concern about a student and we bring up that student through the MTSS process, we do a lot of, um, we bring data. Um, and that data can be, uh, come from our screeners that we have, like our iReady assessment screener. It can come from, um, Acadian's reading that we have. So we have some really great, great assessments here, uh, really like comprehensive, especially in literacy, that kinda touches all those different pieces of literacy to look at. But, we also wanna look at classroom work as well. So, you might have a student that really struggles with, um, testing on the computer or one-on, like they might just have, have a really bad day. And that might not show the whole picture of the child. So for the work that we do in our collaborative teams, when we're talking about what we want students to know, teachers can bring samples of student work as well. So we're still gonna use like the robust assessment system that we have here, as a piece of data to talk about a child and how we can help them, but also use our classroom assessments that we know are aligned to competencies and standards. So, and, um, and it only can happen when we make time for it and make a structure, uh, have a structure for it. So, I'm very honored to be here and support that. A couple other things, I mean, I know, you know, just, I know, uh, Dr. Bennett and, um, Mr. French shared that you're wondering about the curse of law. And, um, that is something I could talk about in our collaborative teams, our K-two and three, five. So that law just says that we need to teach cursive in student, for students by the time they graduate. Um, and so checking in with teachers, we do teach cursive here. So we would just take it to the next step of just, uh, consistency and routines and materials, uh, so that the outcomes, again, it's a smoother path, pathway for kids and not, you know, this kind of instruction here, this kind of instruction there. But we are, you know, in compliance with that, we are teaching cursive, uh, but we always can tighten things up a little bit.
Is it graduation or is it grade five?
Fifth grade.
Right, so graduation from here, not graduation from high school. I just want that to be clear for people that.
Yeah.
Might ask that question.
Yeah, and I think my question, too, was just what curriculum you would be using for that.
So, right now, there's not like one set curriculum, I think it's a lot of like, um, teacher-made materials and instructions. So I could, um, my goal would be to take a look at what we're using for handwriting in the younger grades, like handwriting without tears or Xanabulisher, and then see if that's something we want to, uh, continue for our three-five, three through five kiddos. So bringing in the OT into those conversations, bringing in our kindergarten teachers into those conversations. So that's what I mean about kind of like tightening that, that piece up a bit. We could definitely make it smoother for our, our students here. Um, so we can have those conversations during our vertical team times, or I might not lead that conversation, but Brandon and I will talk about how to have that conversation and he can work with his teachers on that as well.
One of the things we talked about, um, in June was the math assessment and really focusing on tightening up math because literacy has been such a, a focus. So I don't know if that has come up, um, and I know that we were changing one assessment to another, we were getting rid of Ames Webb.
Ames Webb, and, and we've moved towards Acadian.
Acadian, i- is that gonna be for math also?
Yep, bringing in math, yep. And we'll continue with iReady as well.
Okay, have the teachers had professional learning on the new system?
Um, the classroom teachers have not.
Okay.
Um, it will be, um, happening over the next couple of weeks. The classroom teachers are only, um, uh, for math are, are giving the assessment, they're not scoring it. So our interventionist will be scoring it. And, um, um, Mrs. Schuster has had it, Mrs. Taton has not had it yet.
Okay.
For the scoring, a piece of it.
And Mrs. Taton will have it in the next couple of weeks so that she can score these kids?
She will have it.
Okay.
I told, I told Ms. Schuster when I was here, I could help her, too.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, right.
And then, you know, just to get, um, let's talk a little bit more, just to give you a, a sense of this work district-wide, um, with a district this large, such a high expertise in our educators, we want to really focus in on the process. So everything that I'm talking about here and the process that we're doing here is a similar approach that I'd like to take, which are, things are already happening in other buildings as well. So, when the students leave East Kingston and go to the middle school, um, just like similar, the, the staff have similar processes that they go through to talk about what students need to know and make sure the collaboration and consistency is there between those that teach similar content, um, and those that teach maybe not the same content, but the same group of kiddos in, in the middle school model. So that'll be, uh, something that is district-wide.
Yeah.
So it's just the, the, you know, this is the honeymoon period when I get to start and meet with everybody, but so far, it's been great. It really has.
Our teachers were, uh, were, when I told them last June that, um, Dr. Rasbell's plan for our new curriculum director was to spend a big chunk of her time, um, here, um, they were ecstatic. I mean, they, they've never had that, um, that person with Jill's expertise, um, coming into work with them once a week. I mean, they were, they were literally doing cartwheels, so, um, the excitement's there, the passion is there. Uh, they're excited about kind of the direction we're headed, um, and Jill's gonna be a part of that. So we're, we're really thankful and grateful she's gonna be working with us.
Thanks, that's a question. Um, I know at the last meeting, we discussed like the potential for a new reading program and I know that they were gonna consult with you, and I just didn't know if any decisions or discussions had happened around that.
So we have not made any decisions on a reading program. We have talked a lot about, um, three, not a lot, cause I've, I've only started in July, but we've talked about three through five right now and, um, vocabulary instruction and what that looks like at three through five, where you might have some students in, um, the, those grade levels still learning like the foundations of reading, and then some students that are ready to be more in like a guided reading text with vocabulary and comprehension, um, and how to make that work in your classroom. So I've shared some structures of how that can look like in three through five with, uh, Ms. Schuster and Brandon, so we can explore that this year. And we've also talked a little bit about what type of PD we could make plans for, for next year to support that piece of literacy. So if you're not gonna have a program, um, which is totally fine, because I don't, you know, I don't know at this point, there's one thing out there that's like perfect, you wanna make sure that your, um, your instruction kind of hits all those, those five pillars of, of literacy. And so, we've got the OG training in our K-three teachers, um, and so putting some time into growing our professional knowledge around three, five could be our plans for the next year. But, I was talking to, um, a good friend of mine that's a reading consultant, now sharing with her kind of the path that districts are taking, didn't name any names, and, um, I said, we've, we really, I go, it makes it easier for you to do this when we really tighten up our curriculum maps. And she's like, yes, because then, um, we don't have to, like, we can spend time saying like, okay, how does this structure in your classroom fit into this reading unit that's about to come up? Um, and so when those, when, when teachers can't answer that, it becomes really nebulous. So like, okay, I'm in a small groups in the classroom, but like, is it around nonfiction, is it, right? Um, and so, uh, that's why I really wanna focus on those questions, one and two, while also building our instructional practices. You gotta do both, or else it's just like really good teaching, but around many things, and that doesn't, doesn't help.
Well, there, there are very specific instructional impact, impacts that you can have based upon what you're teaching and how you're teaching it, right? So, you need to become very intentional on what you're doing so that the how becomes the focus and not the what.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So we did start those conversations.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think it was just something that had come up, and I just wanted to circle back and see like, you know, the direction that we're gonna head in.
Yeah, I, I think it really depended on the school, the size of the school, right?
Is there, at some point, we're such a small school, and my goal is community engagement, and I've talked to Principal French about this, at some point there needs to be some real clear understanding about how multi-age works, the importance of multi-age, the goals of multi-age, the curriculum that's built in multi-age, because I feel like there's a lot of misconceptions about how it is operated, and not necessarily in a negative way, just they don't know. And because EKES has always operated this way, that's just what they go into, and it's great, and it is great. And it's clearly gotten much better over the last few years, without a doubt. But there are still many questions as to, well, why is, is my kid in first grade? Are they in a 1, 2? Is my kid in a third grade? Oh, they're not in the smart 3, 4? They don't understand the balance of really being intentional about what kids' needs are, what skill sets practitioners have, and how that works, and how we balance that, and how we use social emotional learning around a multi-age classroom and the importance of that. So I'm certainly willing to sit with you Jill and Brandon to like, talk about that, but I do think there needs to be some community outreach. And I even think for our, our multi-generational community members who really don't understand what education looks like and feels like, you know, what is this multi-age thing? Or, how does this curriculum work? Right? Why aren't they sitting in their seats? Why aren't they quiet? Right? And, and so, some PR around the good stuff, let's go. We do have that, but it's not an understanding of the theory, an understanding of, there are real reasons why we operate the way that we operate. So, I would just welcome that conversation.
Would you want to schedule something?
Sure.
You done with Jill? We good?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Very much. Continuing my principal's report, just like we talked about a few moments ago, and then again back in August, our maintenance of facilities, we just put, for this board meeting, just the big, the big ticket items that were unexpected, that happened over the summer. Some of them were a little bit expected, but there were others that were not. So, the AC unit repair for $1,200 was unexpected. The lead testing that we now have to get done per, per, per the DOE was unexpected per our budget. You know, we knew it was coming, we didn't budget for it last winter. The new floor extractor was unexpected. Superior fire, had to fix some of our fire alarms. The buzzer replacement for the front door is going to be an unexpected cost, it's not fixed yet. One of the big ones that we didn't expect was, we have heat sensors throughout our building, and those are extremely old and need to be replaced. And then we had the freezer that, that we needed to purchase and the freezer compressor. And then a couple of things we did, you know, just trying to be as friendly and neighborly as possible to some of our neighbors that are around our building. We did update our, our school speakers, it was typically, it's always been one, one speaker that goes to both inside and outside, and our neighbors were hearing everything that was going on in our building. So, you know, we tried to be really, really neighborly to our neighbors, and we actually had a company come in and provide us another line. So we, now we have one line that just goes into our building. And there's a safety aspect to it as well, that we just wanted to be communicating within our building. And then if there's any kind of emergency or something where we needed every speaker in our building to go off, there's another line for that as well. So we have two, two lines for that. And then the other unexpected cost was, last spring we had a dead tree that butts our, our neighbor's line over here, that went down on his property and knocked a little bit of his fence off. So, we, we thought it would be a good idea to cut the other ones that were dead down so they didn't do the same thing. So we wouldn't have to worry about that again. So we, we took care of that over the summer as well. Any questions about the maintenance?
I have a question about the AC unit repair, what was that?
That was the front of our building, it was one of the older units, it was installed years ago. The compressor and something else broke and wasn't.
Okay, I was just making sure it wasn't our new.
No, it was, it was the one that's in the main office and in front of the building. Yeah, it wasn't any of our new ones.
So where are we at on the line for the maintenance budget?
So we, and this is before we even get the, the cost of the two new things that we didn't expect, just this past week. Just based on this, what we've done over the summer, we are right around $20,000. We only budgeted 26, so we're, we're already cutting it close. And we still have a couple of things that we know are gonna cost money, like I said, the lead testing that we need to, the lead in, in the faucet in the kitchen that we need to get done, the boiler in the back, we don't have a cost for that yet, so we're hoping it's best case scenario, but we never know until the contractors get in there and take a look. And then the last thing I wanted to talk about, this was an add-on to your board pack, and that was Tom McGuire's visit, it seemed so long ago, but we got the report over the summer, and I hope you had time to read that. It was just a wonderful picture of our amazing school and everything that goes on in here. It was shared with our staff as well, and again, it was, it was such positive feedback from the people that are in it every day, that we take great pride in, in everything that was written in here. The one area that I'm disappointed, because I don't know if it was miscommunication or misunderstanding, but I thought there was going to be, this is what you're doing, great, but also some revelations, and that was not part of it. I reached out to him when I got this and asked, asked for that, and it's not part of their, yes, which again, was a total misunderstanding from Dr. Ryan and me on that. So that, that's the only thing missing. Everything else I, I think is spot on.
I, I think he captured the culture of the school really well.
Yeah.
I would have liked to have seen more evidence of what he was seeing that captured what was happening in the school, like talking to everyone and having this, well, what were they doing? What, provide that evidence to actually back up what was happening. The write-up was beautiful.
Yeah.
I mean, it was a picture-perfect school as far as, you know, PR. It was wonderful, but I agree with you, I would have liked to have a little more meat behind it.
Yeah. I, I guess this is the specific template that they use for each school they go in, and they're not gonna gravitate off of it, so.
Well, they're looking to have you.
Yeah.
Cost us nothing?
Nope.
No, nothing.
Cost us nothing.
That's good.
Great.
So what I'm gonna do after today's meeting, I, I wanna get this, I'm gonna have this on our website, I'm gonna, you know, print some of these out and bring them over to the library, and any, any other suggestions on how to, how to get it out there?
Costco's menu, you can edit it, just put it over there.
Can you put a link, can you put it up somewhere and put a link to it in the library newsletter? Like, the one that you sent out, maybe?
Yeah, we can, we can give it to Zoe, to, we can come up with something.
Yeah. I think this is a PDF, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so I can, I can send it to Zoe.
Yeah, she also prints it out, so we can help her with, with doing both, yeah.
Yeah, and I'll put it in our, I'll put it in, I'll, I'll have Mrs. Sousa, our PR person, tweet it out, the link, and we'll definitely get it out there.
Yeah.
PTL.
You'll have a link somewhere for that.
Yeah. All right, we're done.
Very good.
Renee, could I get Kim Cattle, do I see her last name, Cattle?
Yes.
Can I get her resume, the physical education teacher? That's the only resume out of all the new hires that I haven't seen yet.
Yes, you can. I, I will have HR send it to you.
That would be awesome. And then, we have a new para here, does that mean that we are full, all of our positions are filled?
No, we're actually down two.
Oh, we're down two?
We're down two.
Okay, so we're down, we went last year down one, and now we're down two.
We had an unexpected resignation.
Over the summer?
Before school started.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. So, is that it?
Yep, that's it.
Oh, actually Erin LaRose too would be good, because the new para, that would be awesome.
A resume for the new para?
Yes.
That'd be great. Does she have, does she submit a resume?
She did, yeah.
Okay.
All right, committee assignments. Superintendent Evaluation, we're having a meeting Thursday this week. Not much went on over the summer. Let's see here, Policy Committee.
So, we are going to meet on September 21st, and that'll be our first meeting of the year, and that's that's it. And I just wanted to note too that most of our committee meetings are open to the public, just to let anybody know that they're always welcome to attend outside of the safety and security. And that is our next committee meeting, and that actually has my name, but Andy's on that committee.
That's right, we did switch that.
That's right, we did switch that.
Yeah. And then if we could add, at the end, the SAU 16 Joint Board Communications and Community Engagement Committee, and we're meeting this week at 5:30 at the SAU, Thursday, the 14th. And I'm on that committee.
Do you know when the next security meeting is?
I haven't gotten any emails on it.
I don't think it's scheduled, yeah.
Okay, good, just wanted to make sure.
And then the Superintendent Evaluation Committee, that's not open to the public either. Right?
Do you know if it is?
The safety and security is not.
No, no, no.
Superintendent Evaluation wouldn't be.
Nope, that would be non-public.
Yeah. So the only two, but all the others are open.
SAU 16 Wellness Committee is meeting October 5th at 3:00 PM at Exeter High School, and Community Engagement Advisory Group is projected to meet October 3rd.
Waiting for two people to confirm that.
Okay.
We, we've always met on Mondays, that's why the, the switch.
It's a little shift, yeah. Definitely this summer was doing some recruiting for that, so I think we have confirmed two new members, and I'm hoping for two new more members.
Good. Who'd you get?
Who did I get? I, I got Todd Weber.
Okay, yeah.
And I got Kelly Clark.
Good.
I have put out for the October 10th meeting, both to Carriageway Town and to the library already, as of today, for next, next meeting.
Awesome.
All right, goal updates. Tiffany.
I don't have anything to add to my goal, other than I'm looking forward to the presentations next month.
Uh, goal two, a work in progress, we'll meet in October. I'd like to talk to Brandon at some point about, and the team about being very intentional about the goal, operate as a little PLC.
Tiffany, it'll be in November.
Oh, in November?
Yeah, we, we won't, the, we won't be done with all of our benchmarking by the 10th.
Okay.
So it'll be in November, and we'll have the SAS, will be public by then as well.
Okay, cool, so November.
All right, um, five-year plan, you've heard a lot of discussions around maintenance, maybe when you get the quotes for the roof, we should all sit down and see if we can start laying the stuff out.
Yep. Yeah, we, we started the, the template, and number one is the roof on there, but we'll have to get Andy to that, to that template as well.
Yeah, Dr. Andruski shared with us a facilities improvement template that he wants all buildings to use.
Okay.
And we sat and started to plug the priorities in based on the audit, and then either you will meet with Dr. Andruski and Brandon, or the four of us will meet, and then you can sort of guide that discussion. But we just, just cut the template and started populating it for you.
Sounds great. New business proclamation.
Oh, Dr. Esbel, Superintendent, it's in your board packet, it's from Governor Sununu. It was a proclamation, proclamation, excuse me, that he sent out at the beginning of September, really just to honor all of our students that entered our building, want them to feel welcome, promoting students that are civic-minded, and having conversations around all sorts of topics in, in a thoughtful way. The proclamation is in the packet, and she just wanted to make sure that every school board acknowledges it from the governor.
Thank you, Governor Sununu. All right, old business slash new business, pickleball painting. So, the town and the rec department would like to paint a pickleball court next to the basketball court. Not to impede, not to go, so there's the opening for where the driveway comes in there, can't go past that. Needs to be within the, can't go over the basketball lines, there's 20 feet in there that it'll fit. Scheduling will go through the rec department in the same way that the field is used on other things. It will be conveyed that there's a concern that balls go to the other side of the road, they're gonna get covered in poison oak if they have to go get them. But, also it's a good way to get more of the community around the school, especially...
Was there a discussion around when they would do this?
They painted the lines and the guy's probably ready to get it going. The funds will come out of the rec department too.
You're talking scheduling the pickleball or the lining?
No, no, I don't, yeah, not the lining. I guess I'm, I'm, you know, it's great, yes, up until the kids are watching during recess and not playing?
No, no, no.
Like, what are the time, what are the protocols for all of that?
It'll, it'll be non-school hours.
Okay.
It'll be, it'll be like we do other rec stuff, so, you know, baseball, whatever, soccer, it's always done after school hours. Basketball's after school hours, it'll be weekends or somewhere.
So it won't impede on our kids at all?
It won't impede on any of our school day, regular school day or evening, you know, if we have the musical, where we need the parking, it's not gonna happen on those days. So, the rec department will communicate with us when we have things scheduled.
Yeah, it's the same thing, like, when we're doing basketball, you know, and there's a play going on, it's like, you guys can't use.
Sure, the school takes precedent over.
Yes, exactly, so.
So how would it be though, like, if there's like baseball game going on, you wouldn't schedule two things at once because people would be trying to come in to park in that?
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, cool.
Oh, and we're gonna have, we gotta put cones down the side, so if somebody comes into that lot, don't turn down there.
Where, where are they housing the nets up in the?
Yeah, it'll be up in the shed up there. Depending on how much it is, we may need to get another little shed to put up next to it, but the rec department's got budget for it.
Okay, and then the other question I have is like liability insurance, so like who's liable?
The rec department carries liability insurance.
Okay. So they?
They're through the town.
Okay, all right. So would they sign up through town, or like, it's just free, they come and use, like, is it a B?
They'd, they'd have to, there's a rec waiver that everybody's, signs up for, it's actually part of, now anytime we do signups, it's part of that now.
Okay.
I'm not quite sure how they're gonna wanna do it, but to an extent, there's gonna have to be a point man for them.
Okay. That would take care of all the waivers, because I'm just thinking like, it's one thing to just come in and choose who, you know, but to like set up actual like equipment and stuff, that would all be liability.
That's gotta be there, yeah, that's gotta be up there.
Taken care of.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Crosswalks are nice.
Yeah, they do though.
Yeah.
They do.
They do, and did I notice that a sign was going up too? A new sign on South Road?
Uh, I think that was, I, I think that was part of it.
Okay.
To highlight the crosswalks, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't see it yet, but it looked like they were gonna put something up, so, yeah, I think it looks great. And I'm kinda wondering if it's gonna slow people down. Like I think I've witnessed a few people actually slowing down a little bit.
I hope so.
Yeah.
Do you need an official vote for the pickleball?
Do we? I don't know.
Should we just give an official?
I think just give a, like, why not? I'm not, I'm not.
I'd like to propose that we allow the rec, East Kingston Recreation Department to move forward with painting lines for the pickleball court and usage as we, as discussed. A second? Call in favor? Hi. Excellent. Good.
Um, I have something for new business too, Andy, if, um, you don't have anything else, um, on pickleball. I was looking at the school calendar and I noticed that we only have, uh, it says we have 180 student days, but we actually only have 177 days for students. The month of October, January and March are all one day shy of the listed amount. So in October, we have 21 student days, um, listed and we, I only counted 20. Same thing in January. And then in March, we have 19 student days and I only counted 18. So I was just, um, just wanted to inquire about that. If we're trying to get the students 180 days.
Is it days or hours?
Well, I think it can be either or, but.
We're moving to hours. We used to be days. Yep.
Okay.
Yep. We had to, um, we had to send the SAU, um, all of our in-service days and everything that we had changed from our early release days to the, the, the fewer full days. Um, so, uh, we are now on an hour. We're still using the days obviously for our calendars, but we're now on an hours, uh, scheduled for the DOE.
Okay. I just always hear like 180 days, like, you know, and then, so I just didn't know like.
Is that the most updated school calendar?
Um, I printed it out this afternoon.
Was that off, uh, our website?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. It does look like it has been edited and so I do, but it was like, yeah, this afternoon. So if you updated after I checked, but, so I didn't know what is like the SEU's like philosophy. Do, does every school do it a little differently? Or do we strive to get them in for like 180 days?
We're all moving towards hours of instruction for the school year. So it's, it's, um, and that's a conversation I've heard superintendents have across the state in moving away from days to hours of instruction. So I can, um, check with Dr. Esbel if she would have submitted any of that to the state. But I know when the calendar came up in conversations around moving to full day PDs instead of the half days, um, which is, we used to do half days, cause if you serve the kids lunch, it counts as a day and you have a certain number of days. So the moving towards instruction, um, cause I think we have more than enough time in our day of instruction that we have provided, we've met our mark every year, that we can do the whole day of PD and still provide the legal requirements of hours of instruction for our kiddos. So it's, that's what it's moving towards. But I think it, we didn't put it on the calendar. My guess is that it would have been confusing to parents if we had listed like hours of instruction.
Yeah.
But we should have the accurate number of days on there. So we'll correct that for sure.
Yeah, I was just curious. And then, so what does that mean for like a snow day? Like, does that, if we're going to, you know, would those hours be made up?
It, so it depends because we buffer in a certain number of like contingency hours. So that if we have three snow days, we still have enough hours of instruction that we've met our quota. Or we would make the days up at the end of the year or the hours of instruction up at the end of the year as we do now. Or some do remote learning and that i- if it's a snow, if it's a snowstorm and work and the superintendent's decided it's a remote learning day, it's not a snow day, it's a remote learning day, that counts as hours of instruction. We, and so that goes towards our, our end of year total. Did you want to add anything or?
No, um, I was actually, I went on to look at the calendar and yeah, October is 20 days. It says 21, so I'm gonna do that. But, um, uh, thinking about the hours piece, it does make more sense if it actually helps students out to have more instructional time without those early releases and making sure we have full days of instruction.
Yeah, I'm just thinking like, you know, in my head, it's like, oh, 180 days and then, you know, you get three days built in and then you gotta make up the snow days. So I'm just, if we're like moving away from that, just an explanation and maybe just to explain that to parents who are like, oh, the, you know, it's only 177 days, like, you know, we've got this hours thing.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
You know, we're above of, in the hours, but it was just something that I wanted to chat about.
Well, it's a, it's a good point. And so we can work with the SEU in terms of their, the talking points for open houses and other parent evening nights. So the parents can get that information accurately, for sure.
All right. Um, do we need to go into non-public? Should I do a quick update or?
It's up to you. There's no really update yet.
Okay.
There will be.
Yeah. So next meeting I'll have updates for you guys.
Okay.
There's been nothing substantial.
Okay.
All right. Call the meeting to a close at 6:46.